Yeah, because I'm getting text messages from people saying, where are you? We can't find you.
Okay, we'll record. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Father Charles T. Myers and I am the pastor of the Episcopal Church of St. John the Baptist, as well as the faith tri-chair for the State Coordinating Committee for the Poor People's Campaign, and also co-lead with Dr. James Morris of the region of Central Florida for the Poor People's Campaign. And I would like to introduce to you our co-hosts for tonight, Dr. James Morris, who will introduce our speaker. Dr. Morris, over to you.
Thank you, Father Charles. Greetings to each of you. Delighted to have you with us tonight. This is a very, very important town hall meeting tonight. We have with us the person who I call the Amendment Two Guru for the state of Florida, and certainly Amendment Two Guru for the Fight for Fifteen, which is what Amendment Two is all about. And so, I'm pleased and delighted to have with us tonight Linda Joseph, who's taken out of her busy schedule to spend some time with us tonight. She has several events. So, Linda, we are delighted that you're with us and we want to hear from you on what we ought to be doing to prepare to get ready for Amendment Two.
Well, thank you so much, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'm sorry you can't see me live because I'm driving to another event. You know, tonight is the night of the debate, the last and final debate of the year. So, I'm hosting that debate tonight. But I could not miss an opportunity to speak to the good people of Florida and all the people that you guys serve or you guys preach to about Amendment Two and tell you how important this Amendment Two. And let me give you a little background about Amendment Two. Amendment Two is when, last year, two years ago, we said enough is enough. We've lobbied, we've cried, we've knocked on doors, and we told these legislators, we need a living wage. And in 2007, in 2013, the mayor of Miami Beach raised the minimum wage from $13 an hour. Okay? Because he said he knew that. There's no way you could live on Miami Beach on what the minimum wage that was at the time. At that time, it was $8.21. And he said, there's no way. You cannot live in a revenue that they brought into Miami Beach that the small business could afford to pay the workers that kind of money because they were called quality workers. The governor sued the mayor of Miami Beach. When all the residents and all the small businesses agreed, the governor of the state of Florida sued the mayor of Miami Beach. So, he could not illiterally just raise his minimum wage in his city. That was devastating. Then we said that was enough. It was time to raise minimum wage. We stopped doing the pieces. So, we did. We collected ballots across the country, from Tallahassee all the way to Key West. We collect ballots so it could get on the ballot of 2014 that we could start paying people, essential workers, a living wage. Before this pandemic, we've been fighting for this, and more so because of this pandemic. Most of the people that will be affected with it are the essential workers. When we're at home and bunkering down and letting this pandemic go over, or when they told us to stay home, we had, most of us had the pleasure of sitting home. Not essential workers. And do you know essential workers, most of them make minimum wage? And we call them essential workers? These are the people I, my members, these are the people I work with, who I defend. They were making, they still make it $8,056. So, we said, never again. So, we are changing, listen to me, the constitution of the state of Florida. We have to change the constitution of the state of Florida so we could pay family a living wage. We could pay family who work with dignity. We could pay family and say that, we see you, we appreciate you, and we're going to pay you what you're worth. So, this November, and all the early voting, we have a chance to make it right for our essential workers. We have a chance to lift all ties up. It's not only a raise for minimum wage, it's a raise for everyone. Too many people in the state of Florida live below the poverty line. In the Sunshine State, they live below the poverty line. And these are people that work. Let me say that once again, because I don't know if y'all heard me. These people work and they live under the poverty line. This cannot be right and it cannot be just. So, this November, we have an opportunity to vote for Amendment Two. Listen, you're going to hear all the scare tactics, always going to destroy the economy. It's going to destroy small businesses. It's going to destroy it. It did not destroy New York. It did not destroy Seattle. It did not destroy all these other, these other states that was able to pay a $15 minimum wage. And let me tell how we did it and how fair I think it is. It goes up gradually. So, in every September of '21, we will bring everybody in the state of Florida $10 an hour. And every year after that, on September 30th, we're going to put a dollar raise on everybody. And a dollar raise in the next 2020, 2022, 2023, 2024, 2025, and '26. By 2026, everybody should be at $15 in the state of Florida. That is more than enough time for small businesses and leasing companies and people, vendors, to get ready. You know, all the time, it's our workers who always take the brunt of it. They're the ones who's taking the hit of it, not making enough. It's just, this is the time. And this happened because, not because, not because of people we elected. Understand that. It happened because we, the people, said enough is enough. People should be able to work with some dignity, live with some dignity. And I leave you with this, and this brings me chills every time I say this. I have a worker of mine, she works two jobs. Thirteen years, she's been working at Popeyes and she's been working at McDonald's. And mine, McDonald's is the second largest company of the world, second largest. She said to me, Ms. Linda, tell your, tell people who's going to listen to you, $15 will not change, $15 will not change or affect, it's not just going to change my life. $15 will save my life. And I leave you with this. She works. So, I ask everyone, please, vote yes for Amendment Two. Tell everyone who can listen to you, vote yes for Amendment Two. And this is another thing I need to tell you also. The opposition is spending millions. I'm going to say this again. The opposition, who does not want this to go through, is spending millions to defeat this amendment. Instead of paying the people what they need, not what they want, what they need and what they deserve. So, they'd rather spend money on lobbyists, they'd rather spend money on pushing the narrative, the negative narrative, than paying the people what they worth. So, this November, we in the state of Florida saying enough is enough. It is time to pay people, working people, a living wage. Let's give some people dignity. Let's give them their respect back. Anybody have any question about Amendment Two? Well, I guess not. Well, please, please, remember to vote yes on Amendment Two. Bring your cousin, bring your sister, bring your friends. We really do need these. The members that I work with are depending on this. They got their hopes up. We just don't think that, we're just going to pray that the state of Florida is going to do what they're going to do. And the right thing to do is pay working family what they need and what they deserve. Thank you so much for giving me this platform. Thank you, Dr. Morris. Thank you, Dr. Charles. If you guys have any question, you have my number.
Linda, there's one question I'd like to ask you right quick. I'm sorry it came to mind. I was asked, who are these millionaires? Are these corporations that are fighting this? Or who are the local business people?
Great question. It's not local business. It's the millionaires. It's the people who owns Red Lobster, the people that own McDonald's, the people that owns the big corporation. They're the ones who's putting up the big money. Because you have to have big money to fight the people. Because Amendment Two is grassroots. It's people to people. Like, we don't have, you don't see big commercials about Amendment Two. You're not going to see big billboard. It's just me speaking every chance I get about everybody in everyone's ear to tell someone else that we really need to push for people. And even on the ballot, if you look on the ballot, it says, our great governor put on it that this will have a negative effect on the state of Florida. Do you want a negative, not a positive effect that would have on families and that why families fighting for this? Yeah, but it is corporations that is fighting, just like it was corporations and the restaurant lobbyists that fought, that really went after that mayor in Miami Beach when he tried to raise his minimum wage at $13, when everybody in the city of Miami Beach agreed. And the governor sued him and won. But this time, we took it away from lobby, we took it away from our legislators. We took away from our politician. Now, it's in the hands of the people.
The language of the amendment is quite confusing, is it not?
And it's purposely done. I can tell you. It goes, I'll give you plain as Jane is the way we had submitted to the Supreme Court. Of course, they added something else. It is simply, on September 30th of 2021, everybody in the state of Florida be, I don't care if you make $9, you make $8.56, you make $9.25, everybody will get a raise to $10. Okay? Second, and then the year after that, in 2021, on September 30th, everybody automatically get a raise to a dollar. So, that gives small businesses and big businesses and all kinds of business enough ample time to get up and get ramped up and let's pay people what they're worth.
So, they changed the simple language to complicated language in order to confuse the electorate?
Absolutely. And then they put the negative connotation on the bottom, saying this will be a negative effect on the state of Florida. But we know who we're dealing with. That's why, that's why I said, we stopped lobbying, we stopped crying and knocking on doors. We went straight to the people. And the people overwhelmingly said they wanted this on this ballot. Now, we got to stay vigilant. Because just because we passed, we see what happened to Amendment Four.
That's right.
Okay, so we have to stay vigilant and we got to stay strong. So, we, after we tell our people, listen, we won this amendment, but we got to stay vigilant because we don't know what they're going to pull after this. But if we come in overwhelming numbers, they got no choice but to give us what we deserve and what our working family deserves.
All right. Well, Linda, we know you've got to push on and continue your work. Thank you so much for taking time out to be with us. We appreciate it.
I do appreciate. And listen, my members, and like I said, I work with the most vulnerable, the most taken advantage of, the most disenfranchised. I work with the people. I meet the people where they are and they need this. And they are out there in the streets knocking on doors. So, I thank you for your ear tonight. And please tell everyone, families are depending on this.
All right. God bless you, Linda.
God bless you all. Thank you. Good night, guys.
Father Charles, this is a good segue, if you will, because we need to remind people that your vote matters.
That's right.
All up and down the ticket, up and down the ticket. Don't just vote for the president, vote the entire ballot. Because those legislators who reject the will of the people and then go to the Supreme Court to fight the will of the people, if those legislators had been voted out, we wouldn't be where we are today. So, it's important, you're listening, you're watching, it's important to vote up and down the ballot.
Absolutely. And make sure you check all your boxes and everything else and fill them in right for that. I would just like for our panel to introduce themselves and then we'll get into a small discussion because we know people want to get ready for other meetings as well as the debate tonight. So, I will start with Pastor McGriff. Will you introduce yourself, are you a pastor? And just tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Alton McGriff. I pastor Trinity See Me Church right here in Tampa, Florida. I've been here, going on four years now. I love this, love the city and my heart is for the city. So, yes, yes, I am Pastor Alton McGriff. I'm here to support because I believe that we all need support and help and to help each other, be a lending hand.
Pastor Philip?
Hi, my name is Philip Baber. I'm the pastor of the People's Church of Jacksonville, Florida. I'm also working with the Poor People's Campaign here in Northeast Florida, the Northeast Florida region. And it certainly seems that, you know, Amendment Two is right up that alley in terms of talking about ways that we can do what we can to alleviate some wealth inequality and the burden that is on the impoverished, the working poor, in particular here in the state of Florida.
Reverend Sheena?
Good evening. I'm Minister Sheena Roll, and I currently serve as Deputy Director for Faith in Florida, where I manage campaigns for the 2020 cycle. And I work all over the state of Florida.
Yes, you do. Father Jose?
Good evening. My name is Father Jose Rodriguez. I am the vicar, the priest in charge of Iglesia Episcopal de Nazaret, one of our inner-city Hispanic congregations for the Episcopal Church.
And last but not least, Dr. Morris?
I am Dr. James Morris. I'm the presiding elder of the Central Florida District of the Christian Methodist Episcopal Church, pastor of the Carter Tabernacle Christian Methodist Episcopal Church in Orlando, Florida, and am court, on the Coordinating Committee for the Florida People, Poor People's Campaign. And Father Charles, partner in crime.
That is true. That is true. I don't know how to feel. I got all of my kind of partners and meeting new partners in crime on here. Father Jose is my partner in crime in the Episcopal Church. I just want to ask a question. Things like Amendment Two and a living wage. But I'll start with you, Father Jose. From the community you serve and from your perspective, why is Amendment Two important? And why is a living wage important? And how will that impact your community?
I believe that the living wage is best seen in the migration of Hispanics into the area. My family migrated into Central Florida in the late 1980s. And in the late 1980s, it was possible for my father, working the kitchens at Disney and my mother, a housekeeper at Disney, to earn enough to buy a home and secure housing in our market. But 20, 30 years later, as we're seeing the latest migration of Puerto Ricans off the island, people with higher education, we're seeing people with two jobs or three jobs in one household and they can't even secure an apartment. So, the fact that wages, an opportunity, have not kept up with human, you know, development and human need pretty much shows that whatever our minimum wage is, before, it used to be enough and now it isn't enough. And the church believes that one job should be enough for one individual. And we also believe that families have a right to have an access to a living wage so we can support our families, support our communities, and move forward, making opportunity equally available to all our citizens and all our residents.
Thank you, Father Jose. Pastor McGriff, how would a living wage affect your community and the people you serve in Tampa?
Well, I truly, truly believe that in Tampa, like, housing prices are going up. Place, people are finding it hard to find a place to live just for rent and everything. But I believe with a living wage will help them. Because when you look around and you see people that are working 40 hours and 80 hours a week and still making just the bare minimum, making just barely ends meet and not even that. So, I believe that if the people can come together with their finance, that every dollar that comes into our community will be able to help, you know, to fund the small businesses, to help people find better places to live and better quality places to live. Not just a place to live, but a quality place to live. And that is very much needed. And for the children, to have parents that don't have to work 80 and 120 hours a week. How do you work 120 hours a week? When do you sleep to find a place to find, to be at home and to be there for one another? So, yes.
Pastor Philip, in Northeast Florida, how will this affect the region? And this is something near and dear to my heart because I grew up in Northeast Florida. So, how will this affect the area up there?
Well, since you're familiar with this area, you're probably also familiar with the fact that there are large pockets of impoverished communities and people all across Northeast Florida, whether you're talking about Jacksonville or your neck of the woods out in Platteka. There's so much poverty and people that are blue collar, working-class folks that can't make ends meet. And one specific way that I think that's starting to be viewed and seen across our area here is in increasing violent crime rates. A lot of the crime that we see that has lately been on the rise really could be identified, defined as crimes of poverty. And so, I think that if we can get more money into the hands and pocketbooks of rank-and-file folks here in Jacksonville, the Joes and Janes out here, I think it would absolutely take a bite out of that violent crime rate that so many of us are so worried about here in this area.
Thank you, Pastor Philip. Minister Sheena, you've been around the state, you've been in community organizing. How will this impact the communities that you have served or the campaigns that you've been on and helping people with? Why is this so important?
Well, campaigns inside, first and foremost, I'm a black woman. And so, what we need to know is that the minimum wage increase is a black woman's issue. It's a black issue, right? Thirty-six percent, the highest percentage, thirty-six percent of everyone who would benefit from this minimum wage increase are black people. Black women have some of the highest paid wage gap. We stand to make 60 to 64 cents on every dollar that white men make. We have been in a centuries-long fight to get ideological equality so it shows up in our paychecks. But being able to vote in something that gets us closer to paycheck equality gives us power that we can take ourselves, right? You cannot look at the, you can't look at the current reality of wage pay if you don't look at the history of underpaying domestic work. And America underpays domestic work because historically it got it for free through slavery. And so, now, instead of not paying black people for free for slavery, we just pay them slave wages as a standard. And this is a way for us to get out of that history and get into something new by taking back that power.
What I've been hearing, and it's just kind of coalesced, is that living wages are interconnected with all the aspects of poverty and racism and affordable housing, which is the kind of the other key to that, and also talking about, you know, safety in our neighborhoods and good quality neighborhoods as well. And I think, I'm glad that everybody brought up their different pieces to the puzzle because that's what we do here at the Poor People's Campaign. We put a piece of the puzzle together so that we can fight these issues. I think a lot of times, we get kind of hoodoo community organizing. We just take one issue and run with it. And that's great and people are good at that issue. But we never stop to think, hey, my issue plays in a lot with other issues that we need to bring this to the table. So, how can we encourage faith communities to go along with this? Because some faith communities would be seeing this. They would hear the rhetoric of, you know, Amendment Two is bad for business. And if you raise the minimum wage and force it, then you're just encouraging people to stay in these, these lower jobs and not, you know, empowering people for upward mobility, whatever that means. But you know what I mean. The people look at this, and there's people in church. I mean, you know, we've all had discussions with fellow people, maybe parishioners or even clergy, who would sit here and argue against this. I went to you, Pastor McGriff, I see what you're doing. Exactly right. And so, how do we, as a community of faith, push, you know, this amendment? I told my people on a, we do a social kind of happy hour on Zoom. I said, I won't tell you who to vote for, but I am asking you for this amendment because this is something. And they're like, yes. And they're like, oh, yeah. And so, I got to explain to it a little bit about it. And most of them had already, my little old ladies of the church had the research at hand. Here, Father, let's just send this out. So, how can we encourage people that this is something that is good? Not only good for the common good, but actually godly. And I'll just open that up to anybody and everybody who wants to take that.
I mean, I think we push, we push it right down to the point of, is you a Christian to Jesus? Matthew 25 talks about, to the least of these, to be done to me. And I believe dignity is one of those things that it impacts all of us. And every dollar that is increased will increase the dignity and bring the playing field on an equal level, saying that this is something that Jesus would have pushed. He pushed us to look out for those that don't, don't have. You know, the argument comes, well, those who are business will not be in business anymore. But we've seen the success in a lot of areas, San Francisco and Seattle, the places that have survived. So, we do have the choice to point to Jesus, to say, if you are believing in Jesus, if you look into the least of these, this minimum wage, this Amendment Two, is for the least of these. So, that's what I would say.
Anybody else want to jump in on this? Now, y'all are all preachers, so I know.
I just, it's Jose. I just want to add that it's not only for the least of these, but Scripture is very clear that a labor deserves their wages. And right now, laborers are not getting compensated appropriately for the labor that they're giving our community. We have people in the front lines of this pandemic who did not stay at home. They kept our economy going. They put their lives at risk cleaning our hospitals, keeping our grocery stores operating, putting food, you know, to, bringing food to market and keeping restaurants going. And they have not been properly compensated for helping us live and for keeping our economy going in a time where many things were shutting down.
One of the things I think that we might suggest to our colleagues and our associates is that we might spearhead a month or a couple of Sundays or one Sunday after this election is over, where we ask our colleagues to bring messages about living wage, about respect for our brothers and sisters. And perhaps we can create a kind of a commentary or maybe even a suggested sermon outline to help our friends to begin to drive that point home to their congregations, you know, in a way that each congregation can accept it because you know your own congregation or congregations and what they will eat and what they will regurgitate in a bad way. So, I think that's one of the ways that we have done it in the past when we needed to get an issue before the faith community, is that we come together with messages around that issue that we preach from our pulpits. It's been successful in the past. It might be successful again.
I would just say to that, Dr. Morris, one of the things, one of the major things that Faith in Florida has been telling people this year is that we want people to show up and vote for money, power, and respect. And not because of the locks, but because of the Scripture, right? Because in Luke 10, I'm sorry, in Luke 3, when the people are in the woods lining up to get baptized by John the Baptist, and they are sent away or he's, you know, giving them a hard time, they ask, what do we do? What do we do? And his answer is, if you control the monetary systems, you don't take advantage of people. Right? If you control the policing systems, you don't terrorize people. And if there's something you can do as an individual, you do it to help the next person, right? And so, that individual work that we can do in democracy and the work we can do to craft a moral economy and to ensure that our policing systems don't protect us instead of protecting, you know, financial interests, that's not just a good idea. That's holy.
That's it.
And it's how we define our baptism. As a matter of fact, it's the baptism that Jesus got into, right? And so, I think if we talk about the Word, what is our commitment to Christ? What is our commitment to God? Because that's what we got into when we got in the water.
I agree with you, Rem Sheena, 110%. I don't know why people in our pews have a disconnect when it comes to the gospel and money, but when it comes to the gospel and politics. They seem to think that the idea of church and state and the separatism involved in that legally also transfers to their own lives, unfortunately. So, thank you. Thank you so much. We've got to continue to do that work.
That kind of reminds me of last Sunday's lectionary reading. The lectionary reading that we preached on was the gospel reading of, render unto Caesar what is Caesar's and render unto gods what is gods. And I love in that particular passage, you know, should we pay our taxes? Is it lawful? You know, does the Torah, does the Scripture tell us to pay our taxes? And Jesus says, you know, well, who, give me a coin. Who's on the coin? And the fact of the matter is, they weren't even supposed to have that coin on them because they were in the temple precinct. They were in the temple. They couldn't have it on them because it was idolatry. They're supposed to exchange that. But the reason some people didn't want to exchange it is because the denarius that Caesar was on was more valuable than temple money. So, when he threw it to them, and I always picture the Pharisee who threw it to him, just threw the coin that was in his pocket, didn't realize what he threw, and he goes, whose image? Caesar. What is he claiming to be? Son of God. What is he claiming to be? The high priests of everything. What is he planning to give? Peace. Really? And, you know, and then he says, render unto Caesar what is Caesar's. Because Caesar going to get his. But the question is, do we render unto God what is God's? And what is God's is the image and likeness of every human being. And when we sacrifice that human likeness of every human being... And when we sacrifice that human and likeness of every human being for the image and likeness of Caesar, we get in trouble. And I always remind people, Jesus was sold for thirty pieces of those silver denari, that probably had, you know, Caesar's picture on it. Do you say we exchange that? And so, you know, in all baptismal vows, and, you know, Father Jose can attest to this, we ask people, besides turning from sin and turning to Jesus, we ask them, will you honor Christ in every person, honoring the dignity of every person? It didn't even say people who believe like us, look like us, act like us, talk like us, love like us. It just said, will you honor? So honoring our baptism and in the Episcopal Church, our confirmation vows that we take as we get older, you know, we're saying that we, as God's children, you know, we who are being restored into the image and likeness of Jesus, who are following in the way of love, that way of love that casts out fear, we're saying that we will honor the dignity of each and every person, no matter what. And going back to our love that Father Jose said, you know, a person is worth or higher. You know, even Paul, when he says, look, I ain't taking a salary from you, but I could. Why? Because there's a dignity to that. And so, you know, you know, working with people and seeing people work two to three jobs and it's sad because here it is. We tell people to work hard, do we not? And then, you know, we want people off the government system and we say, we work hard. Then we're not going to give you wages that you work for in order to step up on things. And therefore, it becomes this cycle of poverty, you know, that where God is doing this. You know, where people are doing this is God saying, I'm here to break the cycle of poverty. And it's the economics of scarcity. Because what we're taught by our consumer system is that there won't be enough to go around. So you got to hold on. You can't share it with your brother and sister. But only when we release what's in our hand, that it can be blessed in order to be multiplied. Isn't that what we kind of preach in our churches? And so I want to encourage everyone, you know, who will be listening to this later, and we're sorry that we could not go live on Facebook, to truly take into account the dignity of everyone. Tell everybody about it. Get on. If you don't know how to use Facebook or anything else, get your people, your church, especially your elderly people, give them this link. They know how to use email and let them shoot it out to everybody. One lady from my church already commented, she goes, I already voted for it, Father, I already voted. So let's do that. And let's work together as faith leaders, especially as the Poor People's Campaign. This is, as Minister Sheena and Pastor Philip said in our last town hall, as we were discussing this one, this is one of our banner issues, especially if we're for people who are affected by poverty. This is the one we need to go and be with. And we still need to stay on it. I like what Dr. Morris said because we all saw what happened with Amendment Four. So no matter if it gets passed or not, we still got to be on this so there's no little language to cut some things out. So I know we want to get ready to go on different meetings and different things. And so I'm just going to ask Dr. Morris just to pray for this. Pray for those who are struggling. Pray for those who need it the most. But pray that God lights a fire in some hind places so people will go out and vote and vote for this amendment.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, we come tonight intercessing for your people. God, so many are hurting. So many don't know which way to turn. So many are frustrated and at the point of giving up. God, they need hope. Help us to show them the hope, that the hope is in you. That you will, you have, always have rescued us in our time of trouble. And so, God, tonight, we call upon each of us to be concerned about each of us, to support each of us, to lift up each of us. Because we are all created, oh, God, in your image. You see us all as equal. Unfortunately, we see each other by class, by the color of skin. We see each other by ethnicity, where we were born, where we migrated from. Help us to tear down those walls that divide us so that collectively we might lift each other up. But more importantly, collectively, that we might please you. For you said in your word that if my people were called by my name, would humble themselves and pray and seek your face, turn from our wicked ways, then you would hear from heaven, forgive our sins and heal our land. Our land needs healing. Our sins need forgiving. So, God, hear our plaintive cries and answer as only you can. Speak to our hearts, Holy Spirit, in our various places of responsibility. If we can hear from you, then we will know what to do. So come, Holy Spirit, come heavenly dove, with all thy quickening power, anoint our and cheer our soiled faces and grant us your peace. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Ghost, we pray. Amen.
Amen. So we would just want to say thank you for joining us. In the posts, we'll give out emails so that if you want to be part of the Poor People's Campaign of Central Florida, next Thursday, we're going to have a meeting. That will be a closed meeting. That's just a roundtable. We talk about how we can help one another. So if you want to be a part of that, let's get on that call as well so we can strategize together and tackle each and every one of these issues. Until we meet again, God bless you and you have a wonderful evening.
God bless.